Good evening. I would like to call the February 8th, 2016 Belbrook City Council Meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Here.
Mrs. Sager Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here.
Formal approval of the City Council Regular Meeting Minutes of January 25th, 2016. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular City Council Meeting Minutes for the last meeting?
None, Mayor.
None, Mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements. First this evening, we have Mr. Carlson, who is going to be appointed to the Village Review Board. So thank you very much for coming out tonight, Mr. Carlson. Would you please step up to the podium? I would like to thank Mr. Carlson for his volunteer service. These committees are very important to the city. They can't hear me unless I'm talking here. So thank you very much for volunteering. If you'll please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Scott Carlson,
Aye, Scott Carlson.
solemnly swear
solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
and the Constitution
and the Constitution
of the State of Ohio
of the State of Ohio
and will obey the laws
and will obey the laws
thereof
thereof
and that I will
and that I will
in all respects
in all respects
uphold and enforce
uphold and enforce
the provisions of the Charter
the provisions of the Charter
and the ordinances of Belbrook
and the ordinances of Belbrook
and will faithfully discharge
and will faithfully discharge
the duties of the office upon
the duties of the office upon
which I'm about to enter.
which I'm about to enter.
Thank you very much. Nice job. Just a signature. Both of us here. And what's the date today?
The date.
And, Mrs. Middlestetter, do we still have, need to appoint someone to this?
We need two people for the Village Review Board, one of whom needs to be a resident of the Old Village. And we also need one member on the Museum Board.
Mr. Carlson, thank you very much. And moving on. Next, our Police Chief, Mr. Dodgery. We have our annual report.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm here to give you an overview, or just some highlights, I think, on the 2015 Annual Report. Things that I think that we did well, or some things that I want to highlight. So I'm gonna skip over the goals and objectives, and then come back to that. As you can see, our citations, 715 for the year, down 35 percent. That may seem alarming, maybe, but it's done by design. I didn't want the City of Belbrook to have a reputation of being a ticket-trap town. I wanted us to focus on serious violations and not nickel-and-dime everybody for every little thing. So you can see the written warnings are, have expanded significantly over the last two years. Again, that's done with a purpose, and I think it's following perfectly in what we're trying to accomplish as a department for the overall well-being for the city. Driving under suspension. I had a chance to talk to a couple of you before the meeting. Up 44 percent. We have 65. Now, that is in large part because of the MDTs that we have in the cars. We have officers that are quite proficient with, you know, typing with one hand. They'd see a plate, they'll run it. They may see a violation, or it'll come back with a leads, through leads with a picture. It may say that they're under suspension. And there's a myriad of types of suspensions. It really doesn't matter, but we'll find a reason. If we don't know that that's the driver, we can't just stop them, but we may find a reason to stop that vehicle, determine if that's the driver. If it's the driver, we know that they're under suspension. So that's why you see that number is up significantly. Also up significantly is the OVI's, Operating Vehicle Under Influence. This is obviously, that's not a nickel-and-dime offense. That's a serious offense that we take very seriously. When I was an officer in Xenia, I was recognized for the Mad Mothers, for that kind of productivity. So, you know, carry that over here. We have one officer in particular that's quite proficient. He works during the evening hours, Officer Davis. So he has, I'd say, the lion's share of those, but it's because he's active and aggressive, and he's also works the busiest shift, or busiest shift, is evenings, and the times that those are, and you saw in the report, from 5:00 to 11:00. Those are, that's our peak time. So days kind of builds, we have a crescendo at about 11:00, and it kind of drops off after that. So that's what that number is reflective. This is just a breakdown of the officer's activities. I'm not gonna get into this too deep unless anybody has any questions, but this, these numbers are reflective of what we just talked about the slide before. But as you can see, most, everybody is involved in being active, and the written warnings, I think, just about everybody had an OVI, and if you didn't, it may have been because of your work, day shift, not as prevalent.
So Chief, in terms of the OVI's being up so significantly, I mean, you, is your sense that they've always been there? It's just your team is being more aggressive about looking for it and finding it and enforcing it?
Yeah, and I, it would be inappropriate for me to take credit for that. It's, we have officers that are active and doing those types of enforcement, but it's kind of, when somebody starts getting active, and they will get accolades from us for doing, stepping up their work, other people will kind of fall into that. It's human nature. So it kind of, people, kind of brings some people along once, you know, someone's doing things. And the great thing about it is, is you may stop somebody for a violation that you think is minor, but oftentimes, they turn into something else. They have a warrant, they have drugs in the car. I mean, it's a, this is just kind of an opener for us to get into the car to see what else is going on. So, and if there's nothing going on, we're gonna be the most polite, friendly police officers. Have a nice day. Thank you for being patient with us and send them on their way. May get a written warning, but off you go.
Chief, what's the mix between residents and non-residents? Do you know what that is?
That I don't know. I don't have the breakdown as to actual, if they were Belbrook residents. It's my sense, and that's all it is, is that a lot of these are not residents. Certainly, I'm gonna talk about the DUS. I don't think the DUS are significantly, you know, just a, you know, we have 725. It's a kind of a gateway from Montgomery to Green, being on the western side of Green County. So this roadway is used by a lot of people, and there's, you know, night spots, you know, that people use this. So in the evenings, you know, they use this. They might not be driving legally, so.
That statistic is available, or you just don't have?
We could find it, probably, but yes, I don't have it for this. The crime stats, the breakdown, as you can see, the biggest several that we have, number one is theft, ID theft, and I'll get to that here in just a little bit. Domestics and drug-related crimes. That shouldn't alarm everybody that, because we only had 25 drug-related offenses, I don't want to be an alarmist, that we have a drug problem. Sure, we, it's relative to other cities, and what they're facing. You may have seen things from the news recently with the heroin epidemic. Do we have heroin in the city? Yes. Is there an epidemic in the city? No. Is the problem with certain people? Yes. Do we know about it and are addressing it? Yes. So, but the thing that I want to mention here is the theft. You know, when I came here, a big problem was people leaving their cars unlocked, and we had people coming in and taking things out of the car. Last couple of years, that's dropped. Again, I don't want to say that that's because of anything that we're doing, yes or no, but I think maybe getting the word out and having more of a presence in the neighborhoods and telling people repeatedly, when we go to functions throughout the community, to keep your cars and houses locked, I think it makes a difference. And this is, this is a comparison to the numbers on the far left in 2015, or taken off the pie chart we just saw. So you can see that some of the numbers in 2015 are, for the most part, they're, you know, ballpark, I'd say, majority of them are going down. But as you can see, the one that stands out is the ID theft. There's really nothing that we can do with that. There's, other than be reactive to it. And we are working with different agencies, federal agencies, that when we will get a identity theft, we'll send it to the FBI, and we'll send it to, not BCI, to the Secret Service. They work these with us, and we'll give them all the information that we have. They have a bigger investigative pool and resources to work those, so we'll give those to them. But, and you can see the drug-related activity is actually, you know, down from last year. But a lot of these things, they just kind of roller coaster a little bit. So you really can't blame or take credit for how it goes unless you see a consistent pattern. So that's always our hope.
Chief, noticing the domestic-related is high and is continuing, looks like continuing to climb. Any thoughts or insights there?
Well, the only thing I can tell you is, in 2014, this time last year, we had a domestic violence detective from Xenia come in and gave us an update on domestic violence crimes, and how we are, the preferred method of how to address that, it's, you know, it's a constant update for us to do this. The law is constantly changing, but I, you know, I don't know if there's anything, we just can't ignore it. It's not something that we can just, and maybe a proper classification might be an issue, where it may have been listed as something else, where, you know, a fight, or a dispute, or something. But anything that involves people in the same household, it becomes a domestic-related incident. So we're trying to capture that, you know, accurately. I talked about this, the ID theft. As you can see, it's up significantly. You know, we had that, you probably saw it from us and through the news last year, that it was a problem, not just here, but everywhere. So, and, you know, some of the reasons was the, you know, people's increase of internet, internet shopping, you know, places getting hacked and having their information given out to the people that shouldn't have it from a secure site. So, you know, that's a problem, and that will continue to be a problem, I think. So we might, we might do a talk this year about how to protect yourself when, if you do shopping, or how you can protect yourself if you do things on the internet and, you know, things of that type.
Do you give our citizens any information after they report us that what else they need to do as far as contacting IRS, contacting their banks?
Yes. I mean, we, you know, a lot of times, the people that are defrauded, they want to be made whole again, and oftentimes, that's done through their bank. So the people that are doing this are, you know, outside of our jurisdiction, clearly. You know, they're not calling from...
But there's like a list of things that you tell them that you consider?
Yes. Yeah, there's a victim sheet that we tell them and how to do it, and how to, you know, to follow through, and if they have questions, to call us. And so we follow, we stay with them, although we turn over the bigger portion of the investigation to other agencies. You know, our interest is with their community and making sure that everything is done, you know, to their satisfaction. Okay. Community policing activities. I know when I came here, that was one of the things that was of interest to many of you, and I'll get a little closer here so I can see. Jackie Jones did an anti-bullying presentation to the students at the academy. She did that a couple of times, actually, which was well-received. I sat through a couple of those. They seemed to enjoy it, and they had a lot of questions, actually, so, which was good. Lieutenant Carmen did the Alice training for the schools, and he's talking with the students there on the bottom. Of course, the community policing, the big-wheel race victorious. And our new officer this year is good at building vehicles, so we're gonna end him up for that, so keep our winning streak alive.
No, weren't we just hired?
Yes.
Why do you think we just hired?
I was wondering about that.
Yes, last year's driver was disqualified. This year, right, because of conflict interest?
We had a non-compete form for him to sign.
Non-compete agreement.
So the bottom picture there is the shoe program, where officers will take students from our local schools that will take them to the school, to pay less, and they'll pick out a pair of shoes. Anybody that's ever done that, it's extremely rewarding, and the picture there is indicative of how they really feel, I believe. One of my favorites, Halloween. You get to dress up and act silly, and have an excuse to act silly. So we dress up, and we go to Stephen Bell and BCI, and those pictures are great. You see Detective, Sergeant Saliers and Detective Vedder giving a speech last year as part of the Town Hall series. Lieutenant Carmen giving one in that same series. Nick Davis and Mark Burns on the bottom, involving themselves in the National Night Out, which was in Sugar Creek. So I'll talk about that here in just a second. The top pictures, an agility test, just a basic, simple test to make sure that we're all able to move from point A to point B. It was, it was fun while it lasted. Bob Lavermael and I were at a talk last year, about this time last year, with the group from the Lionesses. So it was, had a situational awareness and self-defense. So we actually had a pretty good time. Great group, and they were very happy to have us there. Lieutenant Carmen with the group down here at the Resource Center, talking to them, you know, on various subjects. Tony Rubel having lunch with one of the special needs children at Stephen Bell. Just missed all the other kids that come in and are there, and it's, it is pure enjoyment to go there and eat lunch with them, and it's just wonderful to be there with them. And of course, the bottom picture, it was, that's Huber Heights. Fire truck, it's painted all in pink. They brought it up for Breast Cancer Awareness Month last year, and we got a group picture with them. A couple, I'm not gonna read all these, but officer recognitions. One of the things I wanted to do coming here was not just have a Top Cop Award, per se, but to have proper recognition for the proper protocol for what they've done. You know, so if they do something nice, and we have everything from an attaboy to a more formal presentation that you'll see maybe later this year in May. But the two things that stand out specifically is Officer Jackie Jones was given the CIT Officer of the Year, which is a crisis intervention training, dealing with people that are in crisis, mental health care. She's very good with dealing with people, so I was happy to write that and recommend her. And she was the lone recipient of this in a three-county area this year, so it was outstanding. The other person, Nick Davis, Top Cop Award, Miami Valley Top Cop. He was one of several officers that won that from around the area this year. And very proud to have him and have Belbrook Police, you know, mentioned in that same breath with some of the other departments. So things that he was doing were on par with any other agency, so we're really proud of him.
Did we nominate him, or how do they?
Yeah, they send, they will send out information packs, and so I get the packet, and I gave it to, I had a conversation with Sergeant Mead, his sergeant, and asked him to give a nomination, write this up, and send it in. And that's important. It's important to be recognized for some of the things that you do.
Absolutely.
So, goals and objectives, real quick. We're still working on a physical fitness plan. It's a voluntary thing, just to try to get people mindful about taking care of themselves a little better. Our community participation, you know, the schools, we're gonna bring back the neighborhood walks. I think, Mr. Martin, you mentioned that last year, so I'll have some dates that we'll set up and do that. We're gonna try not to do it in the dead of summer.
Or dead of winter.
Yes. So we may do some, some in the spring, some in the fall, so, but it's, that's also rewarding, and it's fun to get out and talk to the residents. You'll see the National Night Out. We've always, in the past, they've had things here in the city, which I think is good. The last couple of years, we just piggybacked on the Sugar Creek. So this year, we're gonna have something on National Night Out evening. Maybe some tours, with some, show the police vehicles will be on display. We'll have the grill out, and we'll cook hamburgers and hot dogs, and have some bottles of water for people that stop by. So we look forward to doing that. You know, our goal's, we're looking forward to continuing our changeover of vehicles to the SUVs from the Chargers. We continue to look at the body camera systems. Just so you know, we're keeping a spreadsheet on the cameras that we've tested. We've done maybe 10, and they run the gamut. There's, you know, the really good to the really not-so-good. And the really good are expensive, and the really not-so-good are not-so-expensive. But there's things that we're wanting out of those, and so we're keeping a mindful eye of that. I, you know, I talked to this group about, you know, once we get those, the genie's out of the bottle, and we really can't go back. So we need to kind of just be patient and make sure we're doing the right thing for the right reasons, and make sure that the legal portion of it matches the technology side of it, so we go together. We're gonna have an active shooter training this year. We're partnering with Sugar Creek to do that. We're partnering with Sugar Creek on a couple of trainings this year. One with the, I've made arrangements with the FBI out of Cincinnati to have a terrorism training. It's a three-hour training that we're gonna have. We've invited Sugar Creek to join us, so I think that's gonna be outstanding. And, you know, we're continuing to look at our training efforts, looking at our schedule. We're mandated by the state to have a certain type of training and a certain number of hours to that, regardless of what, you know, say, Chief of Belbrook wants, or, you know, I may have the greatest guy in the world come, but if it doesn't meet a certain criteria by the state, you know, it doesn't count towards our continuing education. So it's a continuing balance act for us, and that's what we have for you tonight. Questions?
Chief, how are we doing with Green Central as far as dispatch? It's one of the things you did not mention, but it seems to me like it's going well from the reports you're getting from Mark. What's the viewpoint of that from the police officers on the, on the street?
I don't have any problems. I, you know, every once in a while, I'll have a citizen ask, or they may have had an issue, but it's no different than if it was here.
Right, right.
It just rings to a different place. They have more resources and a better capacity to handle, you know, what we need, you know, for, it just works, it works fine.
Good.
So we, no problems.
Also, it looks like from the weekly crime reports, we're starting to partner a lot more with the township on various calls. Is that working out to be a good thing for us as well, or?
Yeah.
It seems like there's an increased emphasis in that area. Am I seeing it right, or?
The Chief and I, Chief Brown and I, we get along great. The officers, they've always worked well together, whether we're on evenings or days. There's areas of the city that kind of overlap
Sure.
a little bit, or touch. So we're very accessible to help them as they are to us. Work out great. You know, we have no problems. There's no egos, and they're happy to help us. We're happy to help them. We train together now, so it's
Good, good.
it's a nice partnership.
Are they, are they used to eat, listening to what's going on in each other's cities now?
I think so. Right. That was actually a little hard for me to get used to hearing someone else on our channel, but yeah, it's fine.
And have we, I assume, had some advantages of that when we have situations where either something bad happens, holdups, someone running?
Well, for example, we had a domestic just south of the park in Bayberry Cove. So we obviously hear it, so, you know, they had a couple guys that, as soon as I clear there, I'll head that way. I was riding with Tony Rubel, so we drifted over to that area and were able to be in the area to make sure that the bad guy didn't leave. He tried to actually walk out the back door, brought him back inside. Sugar Creek arrives, you know, it's, we turn it all over to them, and they had extra people come. But it's, it's nice to have, to hear it and know, you know, we're paying attention, like, okay, they don't have someone there, like, immediately. We're free, we can go there and assist in whatever capacity we can. So it works out great. Yeah, nice.
How long have you been doing it?
Helping each other?
No, the, radios, listening to each other.
That was with the dispatch.
Yeah.
Right at the same time.
Yeah, dispatch.
Upgrade the mark system.
Just over two years.
So it's, it's great, you know. So, you know, if I like it, you know, that, that attitude permeates throughout, you know, the department. You know, if I was to have a different opinion, that would probably permeate as well, but I'm pretty positive, and I think it, it has a lot of positive benefits for both agencies. So I'm happy, and I think everybody's, that's great, working with it's happy as well.
Makes a lot of sense. You mentioned working with FBI, Secret Service. Does that go well?
Oh, yeah. It's great. You know, the, there's a Joint Terrorism Task Force. There's a gentleman that was assigned to that that I know personally. The head FBI agent out of Cincinnati, I've met him and talked to him. I go to top-secret clearance meetings every so often, and they give us these updates. So I have a working, professional relationship with Special Agent Kevin Fisk. So we're able to reach out to him and ask for this training, which is gonna be fantastic. So that's gonna benefit, you know, Sugar Creek and Belbrook together. So they're gonna provide the place for us and the range, the office, for us to have the training, and we bring the people in, so it works great.
That's, that's great, 'cause, you know, you, things going on in the world now, where police officers are just targets, and with all the bodies working together, communicating really, I think, helps.
Right. Yeah, I think
I'm glad to hear that.
Anytime you can work as a team and without ego, I think it's gonna work better. So that's certainly my approach, and I think it is working well.
Great, great. Thanks.
Any other questions on City Council for our chief this evening?
Like the goals and objectives for 2016, so let's see you. Meet them all.
Thank you very much, Chief. Nice job as usual, and thanks for all your service. Moving on, that is it for Mayor's announcements. Public hearing ordinances, ordinance number 2016-1. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2016-1, an ordinance amending certain sections of the City of Belbrook zoning code. Whereas the City of Belbrook zoning staff routinely identifies sections of the zoning code that should be clarified, updated, and/or completely changed, and whereas the city staff recommended a series of such amendments to the Belbrook Planning Board, which then conducted a public hearing on those amendments on January 13th, 2016, and whereas the Belbrook Planning Board unanimously approved the amendments and recommend, recommended option by City Council, and whereas all amendments to the zoning code must be approved by ordinance. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1, that the following amendments to the Belbrook zoning code be approved with deletion shown by brackets and strike through, and addition shown by italics and underlined. What follows is several changes, which Mr. Schlagheck will go over in more detail during the presentation. I'm just gonna highlight which articles there's gonna be some changes to, and that's Article 3, Construction of Language and Definitions, Article 14, Belbrook Village Plan, Article 17, Plan Development, Article 18, General Provisions, Article 19, Enforcement and Penalties. Section 2, these ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest possible provided by law, earliest period provided by law.
Yes, this, tonight we'll have the public hearing on this ordinance, but I'll go through before then what the proposed changes. Most of them are minor. There's one that's a little bit more significant, but most of them are minor, just corrections. We go through this periodically. The zoning code is sort of a living document, that we find things occasionally that need to be clarified or corrected, things like that. So in Article 3, Construction of Language and Definitions, that we, there is a definition in there of what a block is. We have modified that to match We have modified that to match what the definition of block in the subdivision regulations is. Those subdivision regulations were updated last year, so this will just match those definitions, so they're the same. In Article 14, there was just a single word missing, but without that word, it actually changed the complete definition of what the paragraph said, so we, that was just an oversight when that was put in there, so we've added that word back into the code. In Article 17, on plan development, there is a reference in that article about the maximum height allowance for residential structures. It was 30 feet in there, however, in Articles 5, 6, and 7, it was 35 feet or two and a half stories, so again, we're just making it consistent. Plan development goes back to, matches those codes, and that's how it should be, so we are just changing that to make it consistent throughout the code. In Article 18, there are a few changes. Number 1, for amateur radio station antenna. The state and the federal government modified some regulations, and we're just now making our code in compliance with what those regulations are in terms of the height of what those can be, and the FCC and the state have adopted some regulations as far as that is concerned. In terms of temporary tents, again, we just made some changes to be consistent with the Green County Building Department in terms of what requires a permit, and now if you have a temporary tent that's under 400 square feet, you don't need a permit for that. If it's greater than that, you'll need a permit from us, and you'll also have to go through the Green County Building Department also. And then off-street parking regulations, we modified the language there that said you could have a semi-hard surface, or semi-hard is a surface option, and we're clarifying, we're taking that out. It has to be a hard surface, and compacted gravel is not an option for that, so your driveway, your parking areas and that have to be a hard surface, and they can't be the compacted gravel. And also, we specifically noted that parking on grass is prohibited, so any of those things that occur now, those will be zoning violations that we can afford. We've tried to do that over the years, and the definition allowed for a semi-hard, dust-free surface, and, you know, people will argue anything if you give them the opportunity, so we're clarifying that.
It's hard enough.
Yes, exactly. So, and then finally, in Article 18, there was a minimum floor elevation, but we removed it from the general provisions because it was also in the Article 15 flood damage prevention. That's really what it's intended for, that it has to be above the base flood elevation. So, we took it out of the general provision. It will remain in Article 15 as it was. And then under Article 19, this is probably the more significant, we talked about this briefly the last time when this ordinance was introduced. What this will do is add the assessment of a civil penalty as an option. Right now, if somebody has a zoning violation, it is considered a misdemeanor, and it'll go through the criminal process. What this does is allows us to, for those zoning violations, to do either or, or both, depending on the violation. And really, what this does is it just provides the framework. There's some more work that has to be done before we can implement this, but this provides the framework within the zoning code that says if there's a zoning violation, we have the ability to assess a civil penalty. However, it also states that a schedule of assessed penalties has to be adopted by council based on the severity of that violation, so we're going to have to come up with a schedule of if it's parking on the grass, what it is versus having a, having your shed in the wrong place, whatever those are. So, we'll have to come up with those, and at that time, we'll do an overview of how the final administration of these civil penalties will occur. So, who can assess those penalties? Is it going to be at the zoning inspector level? Is it going to be at the property review commission level? Those type of things will be, when we have that schedule in place, we'll work all those details out and make sure that everyone understands how these civil penalties can be used for zoning violations. The biggest benefit to this, that obviously gives us another tool, but we've had multiple instances where the owner of a property is somebody out of state, and you can't, issuing a warrant for a misdemeanor for somebody who lives in Colorado, we're not going to pay to have that person brought back on that warrant. So, this is just another tool that maybe, maybe is effective to get something done, so where those, we're sort of, our hands are tied because we can't, we can't issue a warrant. In some cases, if it's owned by a corporation or by some, some other entity that's not a person, it's hard to get a warrant for that type of entity, too. So, this just gives us another way to enforce those zoning violations, and I would, I would expect that here in the near future, we'll do a similar type provision for our property maintenance code, because that's the other, the other item. It's either a zoning violation or property maintenance violation. We'll put similar language, and then we'll probably have a master schedule that talks about the fines associated or the penalties associated with those violations. So, with that, that is sort of an overview of the proposed changes here. Those were approved, recommended by the Planning Board at their January 13 meeting, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This is a public hearing for us up here. I have one, I guess, so civil penalty, that we would, will we still use our prosecutor, whoever we contract with, and would that be included in his contract?
No, for, so he only does criminal prosecutions. He doesn't do anything in the civil court.
That's what I was assuming, so we would have to hire an attorney.
We would use our municipal attorney, basically, to, if it got to that point, to formalize that, if it got to the point that we needed to put a lien on property or something because the civil penalty was not paid, we'd use the municipal attorney to do that.
Gotcha. Council, any questions? This is a public hearing.
I just wanted to mention, you know, I really like this idea of having the civil penalty. I know, you know, back when I was chair of the BZA, this was, this was very frustrating to be working with someone, and you'd spend weeks and months, and then it would go over to, you know, Xenia, and it would be weeks and months, and, you know, still nothing would have happened. So, I actually think this could probably have a very good, a very good place in our toolset here to, to get someone's attention. I'm assuming these penalties, these fees could be put on the taxes just like we do the delinquent mowing and.
It's a little different process because it's a civil process, so you won't assess them, but if we have a judgment, then it can be attached to the property. But it won't necessarily come through, my understanding, it won't come through you.
Different process, but same result.
Ultimately, it can be attached to the real property, and it actually doesn't even have to be, it can be this real property or other real property, too, is my understanding.
Okay, thank you, Martin. Any other questions on council?
The only comment I have is if we do this, you know, as time goes on, it is a good tool, but we need to also make sure it doesn't get overused, because there are circumstances where people out of their control have issues, you know, maybe with insurance companies or whatever, so.
Yeah, and I.
We've always been fair in the past about it, I think.
Yeah, and I think where this differs is that, and if we would take the next step before, they get an arrest warrant. This way, at least it's civil, and typically, it's going to be used against a bank, not, I don't, I think the bank's more of the intent than, I mean, I'm sure we'll use it for both, but.
Banks are out-of-state property owners, yeah.
But prior, if we followed up, but we rarely would do that, just because of the reasons you're, you're speaking about, is you would get a, and Kettering does do it regularly, so it would be in a warrant, or a day in court first, and then, then if you don't show up, a warrant.
When is this going to be looked at for property review?
Here in the next few months. It's something that.
Before the summer, or?
Yeah, yes. Ultimately, it would probably be effective later in the summer by the time we get everything done, but yes, that would be my intent, is to have it, have it before you here in the next couple of months, so that we could have both sections of the code covered by similar provisions.
Okay, good.
Yeah, Nick and I shared some of those frustrations.
Yeah, I can imagine. This is public hearing, so if there's anyone who would like to come up to the podium. Seeing none, is there any other questions on City Council? I call this.
I do have one on the semi-hard surface. What is the objection to compacted gravel for driving? I mean, it's permeable for water.
It's permeable with just appearance and property values and things like that, that if you're, if you, you know, what are you going to have? What do you want next to you? What do you want your neighbor to have? Do you want him to have a compacted gravel driveway that is, doesn't?
Well, yeah, the real reality is it was two rutted places in the yard, and they'd poured a bag of gravel in each one and called that a compacted surface.
Yeah, and we went through this years ago when we changed the rules back that you couldn't have gravel drives anymore, so that was the big fight. It was, I don't know how many years ago that was.
Well, I grew up with a gravel driveway, and it served quite well, so I didn't know what the objections were.
Yeah, so I think that was changed a long time ago, and this is sort of, sort of trying to get the gray area out of, that you weren't allowed to have gravel drives a long time ago, and it's compacted, and people are saying, well, it's compacted, and your code says it's compacted, but it's really a gravel driveway.
What is the conformer standards of the Belbrook Service Department? Is it so many inches, or is it defined somewhere?
I would have to check on that. I don't know the answer to that. I would have to, I would have to verify that.
Okay, if I see no further questions, I call this public hearing closed. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2015, or 2016-1?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2016-1.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
I don't know. Who is, who is second?
That was me.
John.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to adopt ordinance number 2016-1, an ordinance amending certain sections of the City of Belbrook zoning code, seconded by Mr. Martin. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, resolutions. Resolution 2016-G. Mr. Greenwood.
Yes, Mayor. Resolution number 2016-G, a resolution authorizing city manager to participate in a contract with the Department of Administrative Services Office of State Purchasing for the purchase of police vehicles for the City of Belbrook, whereas Section 240.03 of the municipal code allows the city to purchase goods and services through a cooperative arrangement with another governmental entity, and whereas the Department of Administrative Services Office of State Purchasing has entered into a contract with statewide Ford, that's in Banmore, Ohio, for the purpose of certain equipment in accordance with Section 125.04 of the Ohio Revised Code. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby resolves. Section 1, that the city manager be authorized to participate in a contract with statewide Ford for the purchase of the following vehicles for the Belbrook Police Department. Two 2016 Ford police interceptor SUVs with accessories for a gross price of $52,836. That's $26,418 per vehicle. Section 2, that the City of Belbrook directly pays the vendor for said equipment under state contract. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, these two SUVs, as the chief mentioned in his annual report, will replace two of the Dodge Chargers. They're 2011 model years, so they're going on five-plus years old. The cost that is with this ordinance is just over $26,000. There's another $12,000 to $13,000 in equipment, light bars, cages, all those things that will go into these vehicles, so ultimately, there'll be about $39,000 apiece when they're fully equipped. We budgeted in the 2016 budget about $40,000 for each vehicle, so they should come in under budget based on what we anticipated, but they were included in the 2016 budget.
I know we've talked about this numerous times. Is there any further questions?
Mark, who does that additional work of putting the other equipment on?
KE Rose is a company that we use not only for police vehicles, they do our service vehicles, they do the snowplows, the salt beds, all those things. They're up in Heber Heights, and they do a lot of that work for us. They're really one of the few around that do that work. I know when we were doing it, not necessarily for the police vehicle, but when we were doing it for the service department, we looked, and there's not many other vendors out there available, so really, the only issue we have with them sometimes is they're so busy that we can't get it quite as timely as we want it.
Seems like a very reasonable price.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Will this bring us to, what, one remaining Charger?
Two.
Two, okay.
So, we had two that were year 2011, we had two that were 2013, and then we have the two 2015 SUVs that we bought last year.
So, this will bring us to four SUVs and then two 2013 Chargers?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So, they'll be scheduled by the two more years to get SUVs?
Yes, that is, that is the plan right now, and then my hope is that with the SUVs, we'll be able to extend it even an additional year before we have to replace them, just given that they're maybe a little sturdier vehicle that maybe we can get.
How does the mileage compare from, with the, with the Chargers?
The per gallon?
Yeah.
It's, I, I, I'll let him answer, but it's very comfortable.
Yeah.
They're, they're similar. Some of the problems that we're having in tracking that is if a vehicle is, due to the cold weather, is running or idling, it throws that computation, skews it, so we can't get a clear number, but I would, I would be very happy with the SUVs versus the Chargers from A to Z, anything that we have, they're what we want, and they've been very serviceable for us over.
And I think the gas mileage is better than what the Crown Vics were, regardless, both of them are better than what the Crown Vics were. Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2016-G?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution number 2016-G.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Motion by Mr. Greenwood to adopt Resolution 2016-G, a resolution authorizing the city manager to participate in a contract with the Department of Administrative Services Office of State Purchasing for the purchase of police vehicles for the City of Belbrook, seconded by Mrs. Middlestetter. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, Resolution 2016-H. Mr. Martin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2016-H, a resolution authorizing the city manager to participate in a contract with the Department of Administrative Services Office of State Purchasing for the purchase of a police vehicle for the City of Belbrook, whereas Section 240.03 of the municipal code allows the city to purchase goods and services through a cooperative arrangement with another government entity, and whereas the Department of Administrative Services Office of State Purchasing has entered into a contract with Middletown Ford in Middletown, Ohio, for the purchase of certain equipment in accordance with Section 125.04 of the Ohio Revised Code. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby resolves. Section 1, that the city manager be authorized to participate in a contract with Middletown Ford for the purchase of the following vehicle for the Belbrook Police Department. One each 2016 Ford Fusion with accessories for a gross price of $18,237.52. Section 2, that the City of Belbrook directly pays the vendor for said equipment under state contract. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. Mr. Schlagheck?
Yes, this will replace one of our two unmarked cars. We have a 2004 Ford Taurus that is going to be replaced. Obviously, that's 11-plus years old. The budget was about $24,000 for this. We decided to go with a Fusion, which is a little smaller car. This is the car primarily driven by the detective when he goes, when he has to make all his runs to different places, so we don't transport anyone in it. Yes, occasionally, there'll be a passenger if the chief or somebody's riding along, but for the most part, it's just a single person, and so we went with the smaller car, obviously fuel-efficient, and hopefully, this one will last for another 10 years like today's, the one we currently have.
Any questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2016-H?
So moved, Mayor.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Martin to adopt Resolution 2016-H, a resolution authorizing the city manager to participate in a contract with the Department of Administrative Services Office of State Purchasing for the purchase of a police vehicle for the City of Belbrook, seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on to Resolution 2016-I. Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Resolution number 2016-I, a resolution authorizing the city manager to participate in a contract with the Department of Administrative Services Office of State Purchasing for the purchase of a bucket truck for the City of Belbrook, whereas Section 240.03 of the municipal code allows the city to purchase goods and services through a cooperative agreement with another governmental entity, and whereas the Department of Administrative Services Office of State Purchasing has entered into a contract with Altech Industries, Inc., Birmingham, Alabama, for the purchase of certain equipment in accordance equipment in accordance with section 125.04 of the Ohio Revised Code. Now therefore, the City of Bellbrook hereby resolves. Section one, the city manager be authorized to participate in a contract with Altech Industries, Inc., for the purchase of the following vehicle for the Bellbrook Service Department. One Ford Single-Axle F-550 chassis with Altech 108 inches, universal small aerial body and Altech model AT-37G telescoping articulating continuous rotation aerial device and other accessories for a gross price of $101,919. Section two, that the City of Bellbrook directly pays the vendor for said equipment under state contract. Section three, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, this bucket truck also was included in 2016 budget for $110,000. So the price of this came in significantly under that. The only additional costs we'll have are like for the decals or anything like that to put on the side, but this is pretty much an all-inclusive number for the purchase of this vehicle. This replaces a 1990 bucket truck. We bought it used in 2000, so it had 10 years of service on before we got it, and we put another 15 years on it after that. So I think it's served its purpose well and although this is...
We got our monies.
We did get our monies worth. Although this is a big number for a vehicle, it's something that we use not only put up banners, flags, things like that, but we also use it for water tower maintenance. This one will have a long enough boom that we can get on this roof, which we are unable to do now without the help of the fire department. So for building maintenance, all kinds of different things, it'll be used. So it is needed, and like I said, we've pretty much worn out the other one, so.
Mark, for all these things, these are things that we've talked about over time. I just didn't want anyone watching the meeting to say, oh, my gosh, they're buying all kinds of things tonight. So these are things we've planned for, it's in our capital budget. We've all talked about them with the service department and the fire department.
Right, during our budget meetings last year, these, most of these have been in the budget for a number of years in the capital budget, and they've just finally come to the point that they're here and this is the year we're going to buy them. And then this is the time of the year after the budget's been approved and we get all the paperwork in order, this is when we come to council and say, okay, we need authorization to actually do it.
Any other questions on city council?
Mark, how does this vehicle get delivered from Birmingham, Alabama?
It's actually, the dealer's in Indianapolis. So although the company's headquartered in Birmingham, the dealer, there's a dealer in Indianapolis and that's what we'll get it delivered from.
Got you, that has all the, that they can put all the truck together.
We've gone over there to their manufacturing facility there. They have all, they have hundreds of these trucks sitting there. Not that we're going to buy one off the lot necessarily, but as they manufacture them, so it'll just come from Indianapolis to here.
Okay.
Just drive it over?
Yeah, yes. Either we will or they will depending on the terms of the agreement.
Mark, with all the telescoping, articulating, continuous rotation, do you know what color it is?
No, that's a good question. No, I'll look and see if I know what it is. I'm assuming it's white. That's generally what we get with those, but I'll have to verify that.
So will we have a new logo and stuff on it?
It will, we'll do that here. After the fact, we'll do that. Most of the service department trucks are just magnets that are removable and that, so we'll just have some of those available that we can do that when the time comes.
Any other questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt resolution 2016 dash I.
I move that we adopt resolution number 2016 dash I.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Give that one a mic.
Motion by Mrs. Seager Lawson to adopt resolution 2016 dash I. A resolution authorizing the city manager to participate in a contract with the Department of Administrative Services Office of State Purchasing for the purchase of a bucket truck for the City of Bellbrook, seconded by Mr. Schweller. Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
And one more, resolution 2016 dash J. Mr. Schweller?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2016 dash J. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Interstate Ford for the purchase of a box truck for the City of Bellbrook. Whereas, the City of Bellbrook included a replacement box truck in the 2016 annual budget. Whereas Interstate Ford based in Mamersburg, Ohio can furnish the required chassis and body to meet the needs of the Bellbrook Service Department. Now therefore, the City of Bellbrook hereby resolves. Section one, that the city manager be authorized to enter into a contract with Interstate Ford for the purchase of the following vehicle for the Bellbrook Service Department. One 2016 Ford E-450 chassis with a Supreme body and other accessories for a gross price of $40,038. Section two, that the city manager is hereby authorized to do all things necessary to execute the contract with Interstate Ford. Finally, section three, this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. And this is the end of car and truck buying night for the City of Bellbrook.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Once again, these are items that are in the budget. We've budgeted for it for a number of years, and this is just a matter of course to go through and authorize the expenditure.
Yes, and in this case, this is the only one of the four that was not on state bid. The state does not have a bid for this. But between the chassis and the box, the box will actually be manufactured by Supreme, which is out of Fort Wayne, Indiana. Interstate is really just sort of the middleman on this. Everything will be done by Supreme. They're a Ford dealer also, but it'll, they'll be the one manufacturing the box. This is the truck that we take on all water main breaks. It has all kinds of stuff in the back of that, the tools that they need, but it has couplings, anything that they may need when they come across the water main is in the back of that truck. So it's very important. I know the one thing was how the doors open in the back so they don't get in the way of other things. They have to open fully so that they're not blocking something that you're trying to get out. So we will do a little bit more work to this truck. They will add some shelves on the inside once it gets here, and then we'll do some, the lighting will have to be done, probably by K.E. Rose again. But all total, it'll be about $46,000. We did have $65,000 budgeted for this, so this came in significantly under the budget also.
You're shopping what? Yeah.
So, Mark, if by math's right, we spent $213,030 here before eight o'clock, so we better stop.
That's pretty good.
But it is all budgeted, so that's all.
Mark, this is all the expenditure for the service department for 2016 and the police department for 2016, so we just have the fire department left?
For vehicles. On vehicles, there is one more vehicle that the fire department has in their budget, but this will be all the vehicles for the service and police department. Yes.
Do we have any other questions for our city manager this evening before we buy another truck?
The program for lift gates, does that win any further, Mark?
That, we, in fact, I was just told today, we got the money from workers' compensation. Those lift gates were funded through a workers, they're 75% funded through a workers' compensation grant. We got the money today, so now we can put the order in to get those lift gates installed on the truck. So now it's just a matter of going to the dealers. I think one is K.E. Rose again, and getting on their schedule to get those installed.
Will this truck be wanted?
No, this one will not have a lift gate on it. It doesn't need one for that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt resolution 2016 dash J.
I'd like to move for the adoption resolution 2016 dash J.
May I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to adopt resolution 2016 dash J. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Interstate Ford for the purchase of a box truck for the City of Bellbrook, seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
Moving on, city manager's report.
Yes, a couple items here. This is the year we're going to repaint the water tower that's on Upper Bellbrook by the high school. That's in the budget. We have contracted with an engineer for that work. One of the discussion points, and as they begin to develop the specifications for that, is what do we want on the water tower? So right now, on the one side is the Eagle with the word Bellbrook on it. That's a little bit better picture. On the other side of it, it is just the Bellbrook with the yellow line underneath it. So I, this tower was built in 1996 is when it was initially built. This is the first time it's been repainted, so that has been on there since 96. Nothing's been done since there. There was some thought that that was actually paid for by the school when it was put up there, but I talked with Dr. St. Pierre, and that was not the case. That was a time when the school had zero money, so they did not pay for that. They know that. So the question is, what do we want to put on there now? So do we want, because of its proximity to the schools, do we want to do something like that, or do we want to incorporate a logo on there? Or do we want to leave it blank? It costs about $15,000 to $20,000 to put anything on there, but I don't know what the costs are.
So when are we going to paint the water tower?
This summer.
So I think we probably need to have some discussions on it.
Well, we need, that's...
That's why it's here.
Not just us, is...
Yeah, I don't know that we have time to have...
Does a school want to contribute any money?
They do not. I've talked with Dr. St. Pierre, they have no interest. I mean, they don't have any funds to put something on the water tower.
Well, I mean, to me, just based on the picture in front of us, the Eagle looks like it's in amazingly good shape for, what'd you say, 19 years old?
Yeah, it'll be going on 20 years this year. It was built in 96, so.
What's the possibility of leaving that Eagle right where it is? Does it have to be painted over?
Yes, yeah. I mean, the whole thing is going to be painted. And you can't see it, but particularly down in the bottom portion here, that's where there's a lot of staining and stuff like that. So they're going to obviously clean that all and then go and repaint the whole thing.
Okay.
They're not going to sandblast it off. That's not going to be required because this is just the first repainting of it. So they actually, at least now, they don't believe that it'll have to be shrouded. They actually use rollers to paint the outside of this tank, so, but it will, the entire tank will have to be repainted.
Mark, do we have a break-headed cost from putting the City of Bellbrook logo on it and also the Eagle? Can we price each one out to see once? I would think at a minimum, I'd like to see the Bellbrook logo on there, and if the Eagle is quite expensive, I'm not so sure that I'm in favor of that.
Okay, we can see if we can, maybe we can put that in as an option. And I know, I think that this Eagle is actually different than the, that's used on most of the things that the schools use, that it's not the same, but...
Is it actual painting or is it a decal of some sort?
No, it's painted, yeah.
It's painted on.
Yeah. So I can see if we can do that. So at a minimum, we can, I guess all of it can be an option, but we can put our logo or our new... Let me get there, hold on here.
That's a lot of money. I'd love to see it, but wow.
Yeah, that is a lot of money.
Something to that effect on, again, probably the number of sides, the number of times you put it on it, what direction do you want it to be, all those different things. You know, do you want it facing to the west, you know, for people coming? I think most of the traffic comes from the, down feed wire, down towards the school, down that way, or up Upper Bellbrook, I would think, so.
I guess we don't need it on top of the towers anymore for the small planes to look down and see where they are.
No, I think GPS is taking care of that, so. We can get a quote to certainly get this put on it, what it would cost, and then also then we can see what it would take then to, I'll contact the schools and see if they have some artwork that could be used for the Eagle. Right now, it's just on the one side. This side sort of faces the high school in Upper Bellbrook, sort of at the difference there, so.
And I guess as far as the pricing on the logo, if it's going to be twice as much by putting it on both sides or if it's any cheaper, we're going to hold up. You know, if we're going to pay for one, it's going to be cheaper to have it the second one put on or something.
Right, right, depending on, yeah, I don't know how that works, if there's a...
Probably not.
If there's a layout to it or something like that, you know, if they have, probably easier to, somewhat easier to do two. Okay, I will get some additional information and then we will, I'll see if the engineer can allow us to do it as options within the bidding process. I know there's a few other things that we're doing as options. If we can do that, then we can decide when it comes time to award the bid, which one we want to do or how we want to proceed.
Good, thanks.
Okay, taglines, I know we talked about those the last time, and I gave a questionnaire out to everyone. I've gotten several of them back. I want to pass those on to the consultant here tomorrow, so if anyone has those and wants to turn those in here this evening, I would appreciate that. I also ask employees, I sort of, I didn't give them the questionnaire, I just asked them to give us some tagline, their thoughts on those, and I got quite a few of those back. And I don't know, maybe one of them is the one we choose, but if nothing else, there's some words that the people that are working here every day that they think of when they think of Bellbrook. So I'm going to also pass those on to the consultant just to give him some ideas. So hopefully, I don't know if it'll be at the next meeting, hopefully at the next meeting, if not the one after, we'll have some new tagline options available from the consultant and we can review those. And then finally, there's a bicentennial meeting, next Monday evening at seven o'clock here at the municipal building. Anyone who wants to attend, they're really, they've sort of finalized the schedule for the most part, and they know what's going to happen. They're still trying to work through some of the details and anyone's input is welcome to that, but if anyone wants to attend, it's next Monday, February 15th, at seven o'clock here at this building.
And it's downstairs?
Downstairs in the community room. If you just come in the front door, it's right there, so. That is all I have.
Does anyone on council have any questions for our city manager this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to committee reports. Safety, or service?
Nothing tonight.
Safety.
I appreciate the chief's report. I think we've seen some real positive things come on with the police department, and I think they're doing very well. So I...
Finance and audit?
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
Community affairs?
Just repeat that we need three volunteers for our boards, two on the Old Village Review and one for the Historical Museum Board.
All right, thank you very much. Old business, I have nothing under old business. Someone has something under old business. Thirteen new business, 2016 water rate review.
Yes, annually at this time, we usually look at the water rates and there's a recommendation as to whether those rates need to be increased. We also sort of give an overview of what happened over the past year. So start with, just to give you a sense of, this is millions of gallons that were produced by our water plant over the past, what was that, nine years? So you can see from this that we sort of peaked here in 2012. That was a very dry, hot year, but the last several years have been down significantly. When we go to a couple slides later, you'll see that our revenue has sort of followed the same trend. So we only make money when people use water, so it was significantly higher for these years and then it has dropped down the last couple of years. Again, this is sort of, just to give you an idea, we bill on a quarterly basis, so everyone gets a bill quarterly, and you can see sort of the usage based on those bills. So you can see that usually the fourth quarter is the highest bill, which may not make sense other than we're billing in arrears. other than we're billing in arrears. So the reading for somebody who gets billed on October 1st is actually, the meter's read on September, you know, 5th and it's for the three months prior to that. So it's really the late summer months is what hits in the fourth quarter. So you can see in there, there's a lot of that is where the irrigation is, is where you're going to see those numbers. That's what spikes those up. And usually the first quarter is the lowest number. But again, you can see that we've had, each quarter compared to the previous quarter in the last year was lower with the exception of the third quarter. So not only, obviously, we're producing less, but we're billing less also. The number of accounts that we're billing is actually going up. This starts in the fourth quarter of 2013. We were billing 3,904. It's gone up almost 100 accounts in that time. The way we do it currently, if you have an irrigation system, you actually have two accounts. So in some cases, particularly in the newer homes that are being built, for every one of those, there's two accounts because there's a domestic and an irrigation account. So it's not that we've had 100 new homes built in on the system, but we've probably had 50 or 60 homes built there over the past two years. To break those down, again, you can see here, of those 4,000 accounts, almost 3,300 are residential. That's where most of those, those domestic accounts. Irrigation, there's 441 of those. There's probably only less than 10 of those that are only irrigation counts. We have a couple of places that may do that, homeowners association, things like that. But everything else, all those would roll into this. So really, when you're talking about residential accounts, we have close to 3,300. We have a few commercial office, a couple apartments and some of the other accounts like city accounts, things of that nature. The usage for those accounts, again, this is tracking the average usage by quarter and again, this includes in those fourth quarters, the irrigation accounts. But again, you can see that the average usage has gone down. We're averaging in the 12,000 to 12,500 gallons for any of those given quarters depending on the weather conditions at any time. Irrigation usage, again, you can see how that spikes up and how an average irrigation user in the fourth quarter of 2014 used 43,000 gallons in a three-month period. So that really can spike up the system there. And then obviously in these, in the second quarter, there's not much irrigation use. And here is that water usage revenue and you can see that that peak, where we had the water production peak, is also where we had the peak in our revenue. In 2012, we had $1.64 million in revenue. That is averaged out now to be between just about $1.5 million and our budget is $1,450,000 for 2016. Obviously, that will depend on what happens with the weather. If it's a dry summer, that number will spike up considerably. But at the same time, our water fund balance, we have seen a significant rise in that balance. It's sort of leveled off here in the last couple of years, but for a few years there and again, tying back to 2012, we started to see an increase in our fund balance. What this fund balance accounts for is our capital projects that we need to do in the future. We've got a couple water main replacement projects that we'll be doing in the next five-year cycle, things like the box truck that was in there, things of that nature. All that money is here, so we need to set that money aside so that when we need it in the future, we have it available to us. Just a quick overview of how your water bill is calculated. So if you are a domestic account, the first thousand gallons per month, you get charged $8.90 and then every thousand gallons after, you get charged $3.90. So for an average user, you get a base charge of $8.90 and an average use of 13,500 per quarter is 4,500 gallons. You get charged 3.90 on those 3,500 gallons for 13.65, so you're paying just under $23 a month, which is for a quarter is about $68 for your water. And that's if you're using 4,500 gallons of water. Now for our irrigation, we made a change last year for irrigation accounts. We eliminated this monthly base charge and we're just charging for usage of 1,000 gallons and that number is actually 4.75. If you're using, if you have a separate irrigation meter and you're using it, you're only getting charged for what you're using and you're getting charged 4.75 for every thousand gallons of water that you use. So our average annual water bill based on that 13,500, based on that example I just showed you, our residents are paying $271 per year for water. That has not changed since 2011 and as you'll see here in a minute, the recommendation is not to change it for 2016. But I think that says something that we've been able to maintain that water rate for the past six years here and still be able to increase our fund balance and do the capital projects that we need to do. One of the things that has helped with that is the tap-in fees that we get for the new development. You can see there was a period between 2009, 2012, there was not many tap-ins, there was not much going on in the building world. But then the last four years, 2014 being a little bit less, but we've seen develop not only here in the city, but also in the township. The 150,000 that we have in 2016 could be conservative depending on how quickly some of the developments take place, particularly the landings up on Upper Belbrook Road, the vineyards will finish out, how many homes are built in Highview Terrace. So that could be conservative, but I think over the next few years, we're going to see numbers above 100,000 for the last, for the next several years based on the development that's going to occur. One increase that we did make last year were to those tap-in fees. So effective May 1st of last year, we increased primarily, this was $2,800, we increased it to 3,000. That's what most residential homes are charged for that. The other larger meters that we don't have many of for the commercial development, we left those alone, but we did increase this and I think that is still a fair amount to be charging for those residential properties. So ultimately, the recommendation is to not increase the domestic or commercial rate, keep it at $8.90 for the first thousand gallons, $3.90 for the next thousand. Keep the irrigation use at $4.75 for every thousand gallons and do not increase the tap-in fees in 2016. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are we happy with the operation of the whole system? I mean, I know that we made some significant changes at the end of the summer last year.
Yes, when we looped the water main, which has really provided us, it's one of those behind-the-scenes things and I'm sure you realize that in your line of work too, that most people won't ever realize it, but if we have a significant water main break at some point, the fact that the system is looped will provide a big benefit because it wasn't before and we could have had, there were a couple single points of failure that we could have had that would have caused the significant outage to the entire system. Now the water can go either way and can go completely around the community, get to virtually everyone by doing that. So that was a significant improvement and then we continue to modify things. We've now added a generator capability for the wells that are at the back end of the driving range so that those can be run. All our wells are now able to be run on a generator, so if we have another wind event like we did a few years ago, we're set. So yes, I think the system itself, we're pretty satisfied with. The next big projects that we'll be doing are replacing some of the water mains that are 50, 60 years old that cause us a significant amount of problems in terms of breaks and things like that. That's how we're identifying the areas that we want to go to. The one that we're going to hope to get a grant for, the Upper Hillside area, is the lowest water pressure on the entire system just because of it's on the old, it's on the low-pressure system and it sits up higher, so it has very low water pressure. So we're going to try to alleviate that situation. That's our next target to work towards.
And we're going to be doing that this summer or...
No, no, that will be, we're going to apply for a grant this summer with the hope to have it, the grant eligible for 2017, the work would probably not begin, not actually happen until 2018, but we're working towards that.
Any other questions for our city manager?
Good report, Mark, and I agree with your conclusions.
Yeah, agreed, Mark. And I hope our citizens have an appreciation for just how great our water rates are. You know, I work with a lot of people in other communities where I work over in Kettering, a lot of them are in Springbrough and that is, they almost spend that per quarter. I know people with a house with two kids and they spend right at that per quarter, which is our annual budget, or our annual amount is their quarterly bill.
Other than this doesn't include sewer?
Right. No, that's just their water bill too.
That's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Any other questions on council? Seeing none, we will move on. Open discussion. Mr. Greenwood? Our, sorry, Nick.
I'd just like to comment, we are fortunate that we have water as a resource that we actually can control and manage so efficiently that our residents are not in burden with increases every year. It's really remarkable considering some of the problems that communities all over the country are having, that, you know, we treasure that resource and take care of it.
Agreed.
I can see more of it.
Well, you know, one of the things I think that reduces the amount of water we use is washing, toilets, everything now is geared to function on less water, which is good basically, but not good for your rates, but...
And that's what, you know, we struggle. I mean, that's good for the environment and that's what we're ultimately here for, but at the same time, the water mains that are in the ground, we're going to have to replace them and we're going to need revenue to do that. So fortunately, we're able to accumulate those resources to do those projects without having to raise the rates, but...
Yep. Definitely a balancing act there, but like I said, so far, I think, you know, kudos to you and Dale with the service department in keeping that, you know, keeping track of that and managing it very, very well.
Yeah, we'll want to, obviously, you'll recommend an increase when the reserves start looking a little on the shaky side. I know for some years ago, they didn't increase rates for a long time and then wanted to put a huge, big increase in and that didn't go over so well, so.
And that's what, you know, we've looked at and council has looked at, you know, a five-year projection of where these will be. The unpredictable part of it is the tap-in fees, but even without that, we know, you know, that we're fine for the next five years and yes, you're right, we don't want to come back because a lot of communities will do that, not raise it for a number of years and then you've got to come back with a 10 or 15% increase to sort of make up for that. But right now, we're in an enviable position.
Yes, kudos to you.
I'm not sure where I left off. Mr. Martin?
Nothing else, thank you, Mayor.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Schweller?
Just a comment, just kind of the same theme, but it just seems like one of the